All right, sorry, I was busy talking up here and we went past the five minutes after the hour. So we'll begin tonight's city council meeting and call the meeting to order. And our first two items of business tonight are invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So as we stand for the invocation, please remain standing. Tonight, we have Father Peters from St. Anthony's Church, Catholic Church. Thank you, Father.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of the Almighty Father. Almighty God, we are gathered here today to invoke the power of your name. Guide our leaders in serving our community. Give them the wisdom to know what is the best for everyone. Give them the courage to stand up for the truth and justice. Give them patience so that they may listen with love and understanding. Guide them with your love so that they may seek the interest of the people, not their own. Grant them humility so they are continually renewed to serve and not to be served. As we profess that you are the most powerful being, touch every one of us so that we will be united to work for the common good. We thank you, God, for allowing us to serve and be an instrument of your love. We thank you for your divine guidance, for us to recognize your presence in each one of us. Powerful Father, we put our confidence in you. We trust in you. And we invoke your most powerful name. Amen.
Please show me for the pledge. I pledge...
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Thank you, Mr. Lavender. Next item on our agenda is roll call. Let the roll call show that all members are present.
So noted.
We have our minutes. Item C.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the regular council meeting minutes from April 3rd, the Arts and Humanities Commission regular minutes from March 7th, the Arts and Humanities Special Meeting from March 21st, the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission meetings from March 2nd, the Casa Grande Youth Commission meetings on March 4th, the Historic Preservation Commission minutes of November 28th, and the Historical Preservation Commission minutes of March 23rd.
Second.
It's a busy city. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated March 29th to April 11th, 2023. You as presented?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. Next item is our meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have no changes from the mayor.
Council? All right. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next, we do have a special presentation tonight. And if I can ask for Sergeant Brian Gregg to come down at the front. Sergeant, I'm assuming you're here.
Do you want to retire?
No hesitation there.
Well, first of all, congratulations. And tonight, we're honoring Police Sergeant Brian Gregg, who's retiring at the end of the month with 25 years of service. That's worth a round of applause. Because he is still standing here. So that's excellent. Brian began his police department career on February 23rd, 1998, and attended the police academy at CAC, and has been a police sergeant since 2007. During his career, Brian has had a variety of special assignments, including field training officer, firearms instructor, and range master, detective, SWAT team member, and leader, prisoner transportation supervisor, department. Is there anything you haven't done at the city? Probably not, other than maybe chief, but that's...
No thanks.
Yeah, yeah, he's smart enough not to do that. Department Training Coordinator, Patrol Administrator, Sergeant, Honor Guard Member, K-9 Unit Supervisor, and Special Events Coordinator. Like I said, I think he's done about every job at the police department. So Brian, on behalf of my fellow council members and the city and citizens of Casa Grande, whom you have served for over 25 years, congratulations on your retirement. We're so glad that you continue to be a part of the department. And I guess you're going to serve in the reserve?
Yes.
They conned you into that? All right. Okay, all right, that's good. All the best to you and your family. Congratulations. So just the plaque says, Brian Gregg, in recognition of your 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Casa Grande, February 23rd, 1998 to April 30, 2023. Congratulations again.
Yep.
He's just a young guy then, huh?
I know, just a kid.
The only other like say is, thank you from the support of my wonderful wife here. Without her, I wouldn't be able to do half the stuff on that list. Her name's Courtney, and she's an awesome wife and great girl.
Courtney, even stand up. Give her a bigger round of applause. Courtney, you know it is the woman behind the man, right? You know that. Because I have one too, so. Brian, congratulations again. All right, next is our item G, which is our consent agenda item. All items with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anybody who wants to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Anybody from the public? I have these so I can see distance. All right. Seeing no one, then I'll call for a motion, please.
Mayor McFarland, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next on our agenda is item H, which is the public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Just as a reminder, these are not agendized items, so we can't comment on anything you might tell us, but we do have two ears and we will listen. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the council, this is your opportunity to do so. I would ask if you come up, you please state your name and your address, and also remember that you have three minutes.
Good evening to the council. My name is Carnell. I live at 502 McMurray Boulevard here in Casa Grande. Quickly about me, I recently moved out here at the top of the year in January, trying to go for state trooper. That didn't work out the way that I really wanted it to due to my record, which is nothing but petty offenses, nothing that equals up to a misdemeanor or a felony. As long as I've been here, I've realized that the traffic, not only in the city, but also within the entire state of Arizona, is quite horrendous, shall we say. The amount of accidents that happen on a daily basis, especially since CG is off the I-10, which is connected to every other major city in the state. With me pursuing my career, or at least trying to pursue my career within law enforcement, for as long as I've been studying it within college and everything like that, I've came up with a plan, and I don't want to say pitch, but I feel like this is something that has been very much overlooked, not only within city limits, but also statewide. And before I show you guys what I'm proposing, I'm going to treat this as it's a courtroom. So I'm going to ask this twice. If I can approach the council one time, I want to show you guys something personal about me, if that's okay. I have my two hands here. And I'm not saying or doing this to, you know, make it sound like I'm holding you or like I'm trying to, you know, be out of my natural character because, you know, I'm not. This is genuinely me. This is genuinely who I am, what I stand for, and what I represent. Anything like that, so. And then also, I'm going to pass around my phone. I've taken notes, and I've been collecting evidence from different cities, especially here in CG. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, that's fine. So I'm just going to scroll through and real quick, and kind of see the points and what I'm trying to hit. There's points about speeding, traffic signs, the drop handbook.
If I could suggest, maybe you could share this with our city manager, and that would be Larry Rains, right there. Share it with him, and then he could actually maybe capsulize it for the council, because we are limited to three minutes on your comments, but we're interested to hear what you have to say. I would suggest if you could then work with either Stephen, who's to his left, and Mr. Rains. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we do have limited time on public comments. Okay. Anyone else in the audience tonight? Okay, I don't see anybody coming up, so we'll move on. I'll close the public comments and move to Ward of Contracts, I-1. Kevin?
Mayor, we're going to have David MacCarman present this item to you, because he's the person in our staff that has been managing this project for us and overseeing it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Kevin. The subject of this item is to award a contract for C-MAR to PCL Construction for early procurement items for the city of Casa Grande's water reclamation facility. The staff does recommend that mayor and the city council award the contract for the construction manager at risk to PCL Construction with a guaranteed maximum price of $612,175 in total. This contract is in order to help ensure that we upgrade our capacity at our water reclamation facility from the original 12 million gallons, million gallons per day that we can currently treat, up to 18 million gallons per day. And we anticipate that we're going to need that amount over the coming years as development continues to grow. This, excuse me, this contract was divided into two separate phases. So Phase 1 was the preconstruction services, which has now been completed, and was completed under contract number 1122-11. We're now moving into Phase 2, which is the development of the multiple guaranteed maximum prices that we anticipate, this being the first one. We anticipate likely at least one more to, in order to get all the procured items that we're going to need. This GMP includes long lead items, mostly two large pumps that we're going to need in order to be able to treat that 18 million gallons per day, as well as some additional oxidization units and their electrical components. So that's what this contract is going to be awarded for. This is going to be pulled from our staff budgeted, we budgeted $7,620,000 for our fiscal year '23 for spending, and that's identified in the account number that you can see in our fiscal impact statement. And there is the alternative of denying the request. Doing so would prevent the WRF from upgrading to be able to treat those 18 million gallons per day, and it would likely prevent the proposed development from, any proposed development from moving forward. That's all.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5532. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from PCL Construction, Inc., to provide construction manager at-risk services for the water reclamation facility upgrade construction project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution 5532 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is I-2, and this is approval resolution number 5533. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for professional services with HROC engineers out of Phoenix, Arizona, with a base big price of $934,500 with a $15,500 contingency to bring the total not to exceed $950,000. This contract will provide for the design of the widening of Peters Road between Thornton and Burris Roads. This is very similar to the roadway construction that we're just finishing up on Thornton Road. This is the area just north of Lucid, south of the industrial park, and kind of in the heart of where a majority of our construction activities are happening right at this time. So we will go through the process of working with the designer to design the new four-lane facility that we'll ultimately construct. However, when we get to construction, we will most likely design a lesser amount of roadway improvements. We'll have the entire roadway designed, but we may move forward with construction of a lesser amount of roadway. We're going to build what we need at that time, and then look for future expansion, just to try and stretch our roadway dollars out so that we can meet the needs of all of our development in our industrial area. We did budget for this project in this fiscal year, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that's just for the design?
That is just for the design.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I just want to make a comment. Infrastructure is expensive, just in case anybody's wondering. All right. Seeing no comments, then I will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5533. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from HROC Engineers, Inc., for the Peters Road improvement from Thornton Road to Burris Road, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the transfer of the budget authority, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution number 5533 as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, I-3. This is consider the approval of ordinance number 3373. This is the Community Services Director, Danny.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff recommends the mayor and city council approve an ordinance granting a lease to Dish Wireless to construct a wireless telecommunications facility by replacing an existing light pole at Carl McNatt Park. It's right next to the Kiwanis Ball Field on the first base side. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved a conditional use permit on April 6th last week to allow for the use. The proposed agreement would provide Dish with an additional option to lease the site for up to three years to complete its due diligence, with an annual option payment of $500 during that time. Once Dish exercises its option to lease the premises, the initial rent will be $850 per month for a five-year term. The lease provides for five additional extensions of five years each, with rent increasing by 110% of the previous rent for each term, after which the lease allows for nine-year, one-year extensions with a rent adjustment of 102% of the previous rent per year, for a total lease term of 39 years. This is consistent with other leases entered into by the city. There should be no cost to the city for the construction of this antenna facility. There should also be no annual maintenance cost to the city. And it should take place in the first week, actually in September, is when they've scheduled, if this gets approved, to schedule that installment. Are there any questions?
No. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No comments, questions from anybody? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3373. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of a site lease agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Dish Wireless LLC for the purpose of wireless antenna facility at Carl McNatt Park, and authorizing execution of a contract. Mayor McFarland, move to approve ordinance number 3373 as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, that is it for Ward of Contracts. We'll move to public hearings. I think we have one public hearing tonight, item L-1.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So in front of you this evening is an amendment to the Mission Ranch 2 Planned Area Development Zone. The existing PAD is just shy of 16 acres, located at the northeast corner of Rodeo Road and Pirate Road. As you can As you can see, within the existing PAD, it's currently entitled for commercial and office land uses. The amendment would replace those uses with a medium-density residential multifamily community. This is a conceptual rendering that was provided by the applicant. Now, it doesn't show exactly the layout. That would be determined at the time of the major site plan, which would be considered by Planning Commission, but essentially, the amendment would allow up to twelve dwelling units per acre, which would yield about a hundred and ninety total units. And per the development standards proposed within the PAD, the units could be up to twenty-eight feet in height. They also provided conceptual elevations. However, again, the exact elevations would be approved at the time of the major site plan. When reviewing PAD criteria, the list on the screen is what has to be addressed, and the staff report goes into these in greater detail, but I just want to focus on the top two items. The first is the relationship of the plan to conditions both on and off the property. This basically has to do with compatibility. So when looking at the surrounding existing and approved developments, you do have the Mission Ranch neighborhood to the north, which is comprised of single-family development. And to the south, on the other side of Rodeo Road, although it is planned as a single-family residential community, the area to the south does not have certificates of assured water supply, so it's likely not going to be subdivided into a single-family community, and will likely be redeveloped as some type of multifamily or other use that, that would rely on a large lot. To the west, on the other side of Pierrot Road, is planned for commercial and multifamily development. The area with the most sensitivity is the planned neighborhood directly to the east. That area does have certificates of assured water supply and will be coming forward within the next couple of months for a final plat, because that's single-family residential, and it's not divided by any road. We did look at the setbacks between the proposed multifamily area and the single-family area to the east. However, they are providing a minimum buffer of twenty-five feet from the backs of those lots, and I should also point out that the maximum height of these multifamily units are proposed not to exceed twenty-eight feet, which is the same maximum height that you would find in the single-family area. And there's effectively a larger setback, because the single-family area can build as close as twenty feet from its rear property line, and these will be further away. It would also have to comply with the PAD residential design standards for multifamily development, which does include that minimum twenty-five-foot setback where adjacent to single-family areas. With regard to conformance to the city's general plan, sites up to twenty acres can have high-density development up to twenty-four dwelling units per acre. However, this site is being amended to accommodate a medium-density development that will not exceed twelve dwelling units per acre. So it, it does meet the general plan requirements as far as density. Another criteria that we look at for the general plan is no more than twenty percent of land within a half-mile of a medium or high-density development within the neighborhoods category can be other medium or high-density developments. When we did this assessment, including this site, we would have a total of eight percent of land either used or designated for multifamily, so it also meets that criteria. Regarding the notification procedure, we followed what's required per code, and we did not receive any inquiries. At its March meeting, Planning Commission did unanimously move to forward to city council a recommendation of approval for this amendment, subject to technical modifications, which have since been addressed, and this one condition of record, which is a standard condition that we place on any kind of zone change that has to deal with right-of-way dedication. And that concludes my presentation.
Is this project, does it need water? Is it, is it a townhouse project, or is it, is it an apartment-type project?
So the PAD is calling the product rental townhomes. It does not have certificates of assured water supply, so it won't be for individual ownership, but it will have a, a townhouse-style form.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Matt.
If you could go back, I, I like the one, the one presentation made about the percentage of land within the half-mile. I don't think we've seen that before, but it's good to let everyone know that that is something that you look at. And then the land, the, the neighborhood, Mission, right to the north of this?
Mission Ranch.
Mission Ranch. When you, I was gonna say Mission Valley, but I know it's not, Mission Ranch. It looks like there's a road in between those houses, and then they have a, do they have a retention basin right there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I meant to point-
You can see it on, yeah, I saw it on that.
Yeah, I meant to point that out, that Upland Trail is a good divider between that single-family product and this proposed development, but you're correct, there's, there's a retention basin as well.
You can see it in that, that pop-up you just had, the next one.
Previous.
There you go. Yeah. So right there's a retention basin, so that helps with that. And then they're doing the roads, right? And, and then it's going to be gated, so that's their roads.
Correct.
Thanks.
James, is that a retention basin, or is that the, the water that eventually feeds into the water that goes by the, the park and the golf course?
That's, that's what this is.
Right in the middle? So there, there is a large 404 wash that divides this property. As you can see on the screen, it goes from north to south. It probably does ultimately find its way into the Santa Cruz wash.
I think, can you go back one slide? No, yeah. Is it the same property owner on both of these, the one to the east and the one that's up for development now?
It originally was. I don't know if it has since changed hands.
These two here.
But you sent a postcard to the person that owns the property in the white, and you didn't hear from them?
Correct.
Thank you.
Bob?
James, what will their responsibility be on Rodeo Road, the intersection, and Pierrot Road?
So they will have to do half-street improvements and right-of-way dedication for Pierrot Road on the west of their site. It's planned to be an arterial road, and so they will do dedication and some lane additions. Rodeo Road to the south has been recently reclassified as a major collector, so they will put in a half-street worth of improvements, which would be forty feet. And because we are also looking at the plat for that single-family neighborhood to the east, that road may be put in and/or dedicated prior to this development. Upland Trail does exist, for the most part, it actually, some of it sits within the property, but it will be formally dedicated as part of either a map of dedication or plat, and any additional improvements necessary will be done. What this also shows, council, is its planned access points. Its primary access is actually going to be off of Upland Trail, and its secondary access points will be off of Rodeo. So there, there won't be as much traffic distribution being put onto Rodeo as there will be onto that, that portion of Upland that leads directly to Pierrot.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Go ahead.
I, I know this would be more final plat, but are they planning any amenities? Pools, clubhouses, anything?
It, it will be amenitized. On this conceptual plan, you do see the, the open space areas there within the, the cluster of homes, but in the PAD guide itself, it does provide for different accommodations for the residents.
And then the Pierrot and Rodeo, will that continue to be four-way, or I guess it's only three-way stop now, but that'll be four-way until?
The, with the number of projects in the area, because we also have not just within the Mission Ranch world on the east side of Pierrot, but also the proposed multifamily commercial on the west side of Pierrot. With those various traffic impact analyses that have been provided, it has indicated that there is a warrant for a traffic signal there.
A full signalized.
We'll have to coordinate exactly who and when puts that in, but with the single-family area, that, that may likely be happening at the same time, there's an opportunity for there to be some joint participation in that amongst the developers.
So the, the place to the east of this property, is that going in first, or this one first?
Well, they are also well along on their plans. They, they have all, they have their preliminary plat approved, and their final plat is probably a couple of months away from going to council. So the timing is going to be very close between that development and this one.
I bring it up, Mr. Mayor, because that road, Rodeo Road, then, because right now it exists, it stops there at Pierrot.
Right.
If you're coming on Rodeo, so, and if this plan is saying they're only going to do forty feet on Rodeo, although their intent is Upland is going to be the main entrance. I believe that that other property behind them is going to need that access to Rodeo Road, so they're expecting the help from that other division to help them with that Rodeo Road.
Well, in, in either case, there would only be a forty-foot half-street either way that would carry the traffic to the develop, from the development to Pierrot, whether we're talking the single-family area to the east or this one. The plans call for forty feet of right-of-way where there'd be, which is enough right-of-way to accommodate two-way traffic.
Okay.
And then when development happens on the south side, we'll get additional dedication and roadway improvements.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing to anyone here who would like to address the council on this issue. State your name and your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Josh Hannan with EPS Group, eleven-thirty Alma School. I'm here representing the client. James did a great presentation, answered questions. Here also to answer any questions that anybody has.
Great, thank you.
I wasn't planning on saying something, but I can't sit there. This is Gloria Johnson's story. I reside at twelve forty-five East Laurel Drive in Casa Grande. I also have a home at eleven eighty East Rodeo Road. And I know we can't bring it up tonight, I'm meeting with Paul Teis tomorrow, but there's also a huge development trying to come in on the other end of Rodeo and Treacle, and it's high-density. I think we need to be careful at this point. I don't know if it's a half-a-mile, but the high-density is going in further down with commercial. Four hundred and thirty-two apartments are proposed in that little tiny flooded area that I used to have to go around to get home to, plus a hundred and sixty-five homes and some other three condos, but I can't discuss that, because it's still going to Planning and Zoning. But I really wanted to comment on the density, and I don't know if you're picking certain neighborhoods or how it's coming to pass, but I don't want to be crowded into a little bunch of, of living space. And if we're going to be doing this all around us, I think we better take another look. Thank you for your time. I'm sure you'll see me again.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any other comments from council? Okay, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number one one seven eight point two four one point two, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to Mission Royale Two Planned Area Development adopted for property generally located at the northeast corner of Rodeo Road and Pierrot Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number one one seven eight point two four one point two as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the last item, well, not the last item, but we'll move to reports, and I'm going to start with you, Bob.
Well, that'll be an easy one, no report tonight, mayor.
All right, Lisa?
Just quick, the Cesar Chavez Committee is going to be awarding forty-four students on Friday from six to eight PM scholarships, so if anyone would like attendance at the Neon Sign Park, Councilmember Lavender and Gloria and I are on the committee, so we're, it's the seventeenth annual event. We're not having a dinner again, and we're hoping next year we'll go back to our dinners. But actually, it was really nice last year, we awarded the students right there at the Neon Sign Park. And then also in the lobby area, Deloria, Gloria heads up the art contest, and so the entries are out in the lobby, and so we expanded it, not only Cesar Chavez, but Dolores Huerta, who was also one of the founding members of the National Farm Workers Association. So we got some different entries this year and some beautiful artwork, so if you want to take a look at that, and they will be, we're awarding them prizes too. So seventeenth annual event, six to eight, at the Neon Sign Park. Thank you, Gloria, for everything you did, and Jeff, too. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Lisa. Jeff?
We have the skate park dedication tomorrow at four o'clock at McNatt Park, if you would like to come. Also, I wanted to thank Councilmember Matt Herman for presenting at the Casa Grande Union High School School Board Meeting a couple of weeks ago, recognizing Anthony Jimenez, who went to Washington DC to represent the youth council. And so, Matt, thank you for going out and recognizing that fine young man.
All right. I got a couple. This Saturday is the shredding day for the youth commission and E-Cycles. You bring your old papers, your old phones, computers, TVs, electronics, all kinds of stuff, so it's at First American Credit Union, one thousand one North Pinell, and we've also got the Public Works Department helping us with the E-Cycle, so thank you, Kevin and his guys, Clarence over there. And Friday, I know it's the same night as another event with the Cesar Chavez, but the Rotary's having their event, and I've been advocating for everyone to put their stuff on the chamber calendar, but we'll get there. The Rotary event, and we're also raising money for scholarships, and there's drawings for five thousand dollars, silent auction items. You can log on CGRotaryAuction.org and check them out now. You don't even have to go, but if you want to go, we'd love to have you. We still have a few tickets available. Support scholarships, Boys and Girls Club. And I'm going to, I don't want to steal Anthony's thunder, but I don't think he'll say it right, but we got to go to the DAR Arbor Day, and, and Councilmember Edwards gave a, a very nice talk, and it was neat to hear him, because he grew up in that area, and I don't know if he'll share this, and it was, it was really neat, because I was riding his home turf, and he told us how he used to play there before it was actually a park. But the neatest thing is his brother Mike called us out and made us use shovels to put dirt in the tree, but we did. So it was a lot of fun, but I'll, I'll let him tell the rest, but the DAR does that every year, and it was really neat to hear you speak this year at Mosley Park with your history there. And on my way here to the meeting tonight, I heard on the radio statewide news about NK Development's Terminal Project in downtown Casa Grande. It was on the news. It was on the news about having patios and different businesses there, and entertainment and bars, so something that's really neat, they're really doing a great job down there. Here's a rendering that the mayor happens to have handy, but this is the type of project that everyone in the community talks about all the time, so we're catching some statewide notice for it, so we as a community need to help like we do every business downtown, everywhere in the town, but it's important to support these things, 'cause this is what people always say they want, and here's somebody trying to do it. So it was exciting to hear that on the radio, like in our town, in our downtown redevelopment. So it's gonna be a busy weekend, but come have fun, and that's all I have.
Donna?
Just a couple of things I wanted to mention, I have been so impressed, I've had so many great reviews on our website, people are loving the new look of and how to do it. You can also, you know, go on and you can report any problems, and so I put that to the test, and there was a recent issue and put it on there, it was, the automated system immediately responded, great response from our community on that, and everything was taken care of within a matter of a couple days, and our staff got back to me and it was just, it was really nice to be able to see it work in action. So if you haven't used it, go on there and look at it. Just a reminder, also, Matt, the youth commission has done some wonderful things, their essay contests, I'm reading those and I'm really impressed with those, so I'm just really happy about that. And just a reminder, 29th of Fly-In is coming up, the Fly-In Breakfast, so that's it.
Anthony?
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Mayor, we just had a great time today, we celebrated Arbor Day, tree planting, I believe last year, Matt Herman was the speaker, and this year we were at Mosley Park on the east side, and that's my area where I grew up, where I went to school, elementary school. Nancy Harrison actually was the emcee and in charge of that, her husband was my band teacher, and he happened to be there today. I was the drum major for the seventh, eighth grade back in the days. And so it was just good to be out there, and that park was not a park at one point, it was a dump ground, and that's where you get the dirt mounds, and we used to ride our bicycles there and all, before it was a park. We had Eastland, Eastland was the only park on that side. Paulaverty School was called East School, and so that's where I went to school, changed to Paulaverty, but they made that park after Erlynne Mosley, who worked in the community there, did a lot of things in the community, and so they named that park after her, that they built that park that used to be the dirt mounds into a park, and that's why they called it Mosley Park. So we had a good time there, of course, my brother Michael with the city, he's been with the city, Parks and Recreation for 31 years, was there as well, and I learned some things from him as well in regards to the tree and how our trees, they have like mouths and they open up, and the sun hits the mouth, and it goes to the roots, and I'm sitting there, I'm like, I can preach that. But anyways, the sun, y'all got it now, the sun, okay, thank you. And so we had a good time, it was really good, Mr. Mayor, and so I'm looking forward to doing some more things like that, and also getting involved with Lisa and, and then with Mary, I know she left already, doing some things, I know with the Faith Alliance, we talk a lot about the homeless, and working more with the homeless in our city, and the great people that are already doing some great work behind the scenes, looking forward to working with you.
Great, thank you, Anthony. The last time we had city council, I was remiss because Gloria had handed me an announcement that I was supposed to read, I kept it Gloria, I still have it. So the Casa Grande Arts and Humanities Commission held its annual plenary event, this is back on March 25th, so you can see that I am tardy in this announcement. It was the most successful event in the 20, with 25 adults and 18 youth participating in the event, so great turnout. And the best of show, adult first place, went to Mark White. He's a Casa Grande resident, Mark's been doing art around here for a long time, and it seems to me he gets better every year. And so congratulations to Mark, and really to all the artists who participated, so thank you. This week, a lot of stuff going on, we have, we're gonna hopefully be speaking with the chamber and trying to identify a director for the destination marketing organization this week. We keep having people drop out of the contest, but we have, I think we have one that's gonna hang in there. I also attended the La Paloma Correctional Center update this, today, out in Eloy. They have 80 new officers that they're putting through training right now. They are graduating about 10 a week, and it's an eight-week program, so if anybody needs a job, the correctional institutions are hiring, so, and they're offering a pretty good signing bonus too, if you're interested. We did have a good meeting also with LUCID today, with Mr. Rains and our deputy city manager, and it was, and also with Richard Wilkie, so it was a good meeting, we, they have a new individual who is part of their group now, his name is Michael Cruz, some of you may know him, and so we're hoping that that will help us in terms of our communication and feedback and information, you know, give and take from LUCID. So I'm looking forward to that, I think Michael is a great hire for them, he certainly knows our community, and I think will be a good asset for them. This week, we have the Panal Partnership on Thursday at Robeson Ranch, actually it's on Friday, Robeson Ranch, they're gonna be talking about water. And then we have our Faith Alliance update, which is this Thursday also, for luncheon, right Lisa?
It's for the church.
So we have the church this Friday, we have our budget retreat on Wednesday, all day, for most of us anyway, and then Rotary's Denim and Diamond, which is on Friday, which Matt already mentioned. Just to remind everybody that Florence Boulevard's getting a major mill overlay, and that begins, actually it begins on Sunday, April 23rd. So if you can try and avoid Florence Boulevard, and really it's gonna be at night, it'll be from, what are the times Larry, 5 to, or 8 to 5 a.m., I think it's 8 to 5 a.m., and, like I know I have it here somewhere, 8 to 5 a.m., and it's gonna last for a while. April 23rd lasting approximately one month, and it's from Panal Avenue to I-10, so it is the entire length of Florence, I just keep saying Panal, it's Florence Boulevard, sorry. Florence Boulevard, it's a paving preservation improvement project, again, 8 p.m. to 5 a.m. You can still go down Florence, but it will be limited lanes, so just keep that in mind if you wanna avoid, most of us do anyway, but avoid Florence Boulevard. So just trying to make sure everybody knows that that's coming, again, starting April 23rd. Also, there's a job fair for anybody who needs a job, including anyone who's been recently laid off from LUCID. There's a job fair on April 24th, it's at one, from 1 to 4 p.m., it will be at our Casa Grande Recreation Center, and everyone from Tractor Supply, Bull Moose Tubes, Kohler, Abbott, Eco-Polymer, Frito-Lay, I mean, all of the big boys will be there, so if you are looking for a job or maybe even to change a job, check it out, again, April 24th, from 1 to 4, at our Recreation Center. And then just one final plug, I wanna make sure that everybody knows that we have this text, this CG Alerts program, and we have 35, I just was told, we have 35,000 people signed up for this, 35,000, so that's amazing. And again, it's community news events, it's traffic alerts, sanitation route disruptions, emergency alerts, general notifications, and if you text CGAlerts to 38276, that's 38276, it will respond back to you, you can sign up for however you wanna be communicated with, whether it's a text message or a phone call or an email, so, and/or all the above. So you can get alerts from the city in multiple different ways, or just pick one, and we will communicate with you. I did attend the transit committee meeting last week, and one of the young people who was on the committee made a comment that he feels more connected with the city of Casa Grande today than he ever has, and it's partially because of this. So I think it's a great program, I commend our PIO department and our communications department for finding this, which I've been looking for for three years, and finally we've got it in place, and so Mindy, please pass along my thanks to your coworkers, thank you. And so I think that's probably enough. So any other comments from council? Alright, seeing none, then we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you everyone for being here.